Mr. Waningham, I'll turn it over to you and your group.
We're having some technical difficulties here. Um, he's got a presentation.
Hold the mic now, Tyler.
She has a presentation, but her laptop's dead and we don't have a way to plug it in here for one that we know of. So it may just be her just going on, going over it verbally and then I can forward the presentation to you guys. But this is GRS. They are an actuary firm. They do our evaluations for the non-uniform pension. And tonight we have Mr. Jamie Shaw, Ms. Lindsay Bechtel, that's how you pronounce it. So I will turn it over to Jamie and Lindsay. And like I said, we're just, it's a pretty brief, uh, presentation, but I will get that forwarded to you guys so you can see it as well.
I will do my best to paint you guys a picture of what it looks like. If we do have, oh, is this on? Um, I'll do my best to paint you guys a picture of what the presentation looks like. It does have some graphs, but I think, um, I think I can paint you guys a picture of kind of what's going on with the pension plan. Um, today we are here to talk about the pension plan. As you know, we do a valuation of the pension plan every two years. Um, so we are doing the valuation as of January 1st, 2024. We do that full funding valuation every two years. So what that means is we're calculating your liabilities. We're looking at the demographics of your plan as of January 1st, 2024, and we're calculating that liability number. And we're also taking your asset number as of that date. Um, so that's what we're, that's what we're doing today. And so we're going to kind of briefly go over your plan, kind of what we're looking at. As everyone knows, the pension plan was amended as of 2018. Um, so kind of looking at the benefits, um, as of that amendment date. So looking, um, looking at kind of if someone were to come into the plan today, so that's a new hire, someone newly employed into your plan, and what those benefits look like for those members. Um, so what that is, it's a monthly benefit equal to 2% times final average pay times service. Um, so say someone has 10 years of service, um, that's 20% of their final average pay. Um, someone can retire at age 65 with six years of service, age 62 with 20 years of service, or of course, 28 years of service regardless of their age. That's kind of what a new member is looking at as they come into the plan. Um, both the city and the employees are currently contributing 10% of pay into the plan. We're kind of looking at a high level of what, um, the experience we saw over the last two years. So your unfunded actual accrued liability, that's going to be the difference between your liability and your assets. Think of that kind of as, um, your debt, but kind of like any other kind of mortgage, that's the difference that we need to make up. Um, so that increased to 30.8 million as of January 1st, 2024. As a reference, that was 27 million two years ago, so as of January 1st, 2022. So keep in mind, we do expect that number to increase year over year at our current contribution numbers. So we knew that number was going to increase this year. Um, but it did increase a little bit more than we were expecting by about 1.7 million. And so I'll kind of talk about, um, the differences and why that happened. Um, so keep in mind, we have two sides of our equation, right? We have our liabilities and we have our assets. Um, so we'll start with our asset side of things. Um, so your assets were lower than we were expecting. Um, so in 2022, your investments earned negative, um, 14.2%. I mean, similar to pretty much all the pension plans across the country, 2022 was a bad year. It was a bad year for a lot of your 401Ks, probably is a bad year for a lot of people in 2022 for investment. Um, we did have a good rebound year in 2023, and we saw a return of 15.8%. Um, but those two years combined, our assets were still a little bit lower than we were expecting, um, because of those asset returns. Um, so what that means is we had what we call a $2.1 million investment loss. Essentially what that means is our assets were 2.1 million lower than what we were expecting. But keep in mind, that doesn't take into account that $1 million contribution that the city made to the plan. Um, so the city made an additional $1 million contribution to the plan. When you put extra money into the plan, that goes directly to paying off that unfunded liability. It goes directly to increasing that market value of assets. Um, so that 2.1 million is offset by that one. So our assets were still a little bit lower than we were expecting, but that 1 million did offset. Um, so think of it that way, our assets, um, were about 1.1 million. So that's our asset side of things. Thinking about it on our liability side of things, our liabilities were a little bit higher than we were expecting. Um, so they were about 0.6 million higher than we were expecting. And I know that sounds like a lot, but if you think about it in terms of your total liability, it's about 0.7% higher. So in all in all, it's pretty close to what we were expecting. Um, but the main difference, the main deviation that we saw this year was that we saw higher salary increases than we were expecting. So keep in mind, when your members, when your active members, those employees get higher salary increases, that means we're expecting higher salary increases in the future. That means higher benefits that we're expecting for them when they retire. So when we think higher retirement benefits in the future, that means a higher liability increase. So that's the two kinds of sides of our equation that we're seeing right there. And we saw a lower market, a lower asset value and a higher, um, liability value, so slightly higher unfunded liability. So if we think about this in terms of going forward, what does this mean for the plan? And how do we look compared to what we looked like, looked at last year, right? In terms of the big scheme of things, we're in a very similar position as we were last year. Um, you don't have it in front of you, but if you can kind of picture the graphs that maybe you've seen before where you, when you picture, you know, your, our liabilities, um, graphed against your asset numbers, and you're going to see these graphs when you get the presentation from Tyler. Um, you can see that those asset, the liability numbers continue to go up. We know your liability numbers are going to continue to go up. You have active members in the plan that are continuing to benefit, and your assets go up along with them. But there's a gap between those two numbers. There's a gap between your liabilities and there's a gap between your asset numbers. And that's that unfunded liability that we're talking about. And so those two numbers, they continue to grow together. So we know that we're not expecting your assets to be depleted. And we solved that problem with those 2018 changes that we saw back in 2018. So your assets aren't expected to be depleted, but we're also not paying off that gap, um, between your liability and your assets. That's based on our current contribution level. Um, so why is that important? Why is it important to pay off that gap between those two numbers? It's because when you have that kind of gap right there, it can make your, your, um, valuation results volatile. Um, so when you, for instance, if you had a couple of bad investment years, um, and again, you'll see this chart when you get the presentation later. If you have a few investment years, bad investment years, that liability, that asset number will drop. And that gap between those, that liability number and that asset number can get a lot bigger real quick. Um, so it would be our recommendation for you, for the city to think about, um, maybe increasing those contribution levels, start paying off that gap between those two numbers. Um, again, on that, you'll see a third graph, graph when you see that presentation again. I apologize, you don't have that in front of you right now. Um, but at your current contribution of 10%, again, that gap stays pretty steady. You're going to see those numbers continue just growing together. Um, if you look at kind of a 12% contribution rate, you're going to see the asset number start to get closing in on that, that liability number. It's going to start closing in. Um, it's not going to get there all the way in the next 30 years, but it's going to start closing in. Now, if you increase that contribution rate level to maybe a 14% level, um, you're going to see that, you're going to see that asset level actually reach up to that liability level. What that means is we're paying off that unfunded liability in the next 30 years or so. And why is that important? So similar to any kind of debt, think of your 30-year mortgage, right? It's generally best practice to pay off any kind of debt. And we're talking about debt, that's that unfunded liability over the next 30 years. Um, that's kind of our recommendation. Um, we got that 1 million appropriation. That was really great for the fund. That was a great money that really helped offset some of those asset losses, helped offset some of those salary gains. That was a real great contribution to the fund that we really needed. Um, what's important is to continue getting those contributions into the funds so we can keep paying off that unfunded liability. And again, I apologize, I, we didn't have the presentation in front of you all today. Hopefully I painted a good enough picture for you all today, hopefully. Um, but, um, if there are any questions, the committee house coming today? Um, it is 30.8 million.
That's the gap?
That's the unfunded liability, yes.
Seems like we did this.
We did.
We moved a million dollars. But what I'm hearing you say is there's a $30 million gap?
Yes, that's the unfunded liability.
That we don't have.
Right, so right now, that's the difference between your liabilities and your assets. So that's not the money you need to put in today, but that's the money you need to put in, best practice probably over the next 30 years.
Are you saying 10%, 14%? Are you saying 14% city and employee or the city?
Um, city. I, I mean, that's, whether or not you split that between the city and the member, um, is obviously a, a polar decision, but it would, that's based on, you know, a city.
I put together some numbers as to what that cost would look like if we raised the city contribution to 12 and if we raised it to 14.
Yeah, you can show them that. That's a good idea. Thank you, Lindsay. I didn't know you had it printed.
I'll take a picture of that.
Now, it's important to remember though, that 30.8 million liability is not due now. It's not due tomorrow, it's not due next year.
Right.
And it's an estimate, and it's, it's real. It's, it's an important number to look at, but it's not that two years from now that the conference fund's going to be broke. Uh, we've, we've made progress as we changed it 2018. There's progress still need to be made, but that's not a number just to panic over at this point. It's a number to keep studying and then look at.
And this is something that came up the last time, um, we got this report. And I think what we talked about was, number one, we had concerns about the impact on the budget of increasing our contribution, but instead looking at the end of each fiscal year, like our mayor Castleberry said, we added a million dollars when we had that surplus available to address it versus impacting the budget moving forward. And on the other hand, even impacting our employees, you know, for a higher contribution amount, which I think we were all concerned about that. And that's what I remember about the last conversation that.
And there are so many things that impacted, like you have employees that go, go to work for us. They, they fall into this group right here, and then they quit six, eight months later. That goes away and, uh, this, I mean, we had the same issue with police and fire pensions and it all, it all worked out.
And I serve on the non-uniform pension board with Lisa and others, representatives from the, um, from the city employees. And you, you're right, 2020, that was, 2022 was an awful year, but we have seen, um, significant kind of turnaround. And we get the, we get those reports every month to monitor, you know, that asset value that's held by the investment company.
And you're, you're 100% right. I mean, getting more contributions into the plan is, is needed, but it is the 14, 14% contribution rate is just an idea. I mean, additional contributions like the million over, the million dollars over time is also.
Okay, that's fair, reasonable.
Lots of stuff, sorry. Um, we have Meridian Investments out of Little Rock. They're a Charles Schwab firm, and they manage all of our investments. They have a portfolio and that is probably two pages long as a list of individual stocks that they've invested in. There's, uh, they buy corporate bonds, they buy some, uh, government bonds from other cities, county states. So we have a, an investment guide, another, for lack of a better term, which kind of tells them how the plan wants our assets to be divided, 60, 80% stocks, 15, 20% bonds and so forth. And they just follow that, that guide and keep us invested in the market. And they come and they present to the non-uniform committee each quarter.
What, uh, what annual interest rate or rate of return would we need yet to stay on track? Do it, so anybody care to tackle that one?
Right. So our current return assumption is 6.5%.
Six and a half?
Yeah, six and a half. So all of our, um, projections right now, we're assuming that's six and a half.
And we have done, you said 22, not a good year, but 23 was a good year. What did we return in 23?
15.8. Yeah, definitely was. It was a really good rebound year.
We know what 2024 has been so far.
Unless Tyler's got his handy.
No, I don't. But I was just going to say, the last time Jamie was here, the last valuation we had two years ago, one of the, one of the tables in the valuation, it shows what our projected funded ratio is. So in other words, a difference funded ratio, so before I misspeak, the funded ratio is.
Oh, it's, um, your assets divided by your liability.
So basically a percentage representation of that gap. And the funded ratio at our last valuation was projected to increase every year for the next, at least 20 years, may, maybe 30. But with the market experience we had in 22, our funded ratio, this valuation actually went down compared to one before. So the investment earnings is, is a huge piece for the whole program.
And that, that's common. I mean, the investment, your investment experience is going to be the most volatile part of any pension plan, right? We know that's going to be volatile year over year. Um, the important part is being able to react to that, um, and make sure, you know, if your funded ratio goes down one year, that's okay. It's that trend that Tyler's talking about, that's.
Can you tell me how much money is in that account right now?
I can.
Thank you.
The end of August, it was $17,255,132.44.
Uh, one final question and then I'll hush. Uh, if I were an employee of City of Conway or eligible to participate in this, and I have my, what'd you say, 28 years, 26 years to get?
28.
If I had my 28 in, uh, and I decide that I want to retire December 31st, my payments would start in January, would that be correct?
Mm-hmm.
I drop dead January 30th of that year, what happens to that payment?
Well, it depends on what form of payment you chose. I mean, I, I believe you do have an option to pick a survivor, um, and that's an actuarially reduced benefit, so.
A reduced rate?
Yes, um, so whether or not you chose that survivor or not would depend on whether or not that money was.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Counsel, any other questions of the actuaries?
Andy, kind of related to the question you asked, um, if some, if an employee passes away and there is employee contributions, that the council voted to allow the surviving spouse to receive, to request and receive that portion. Just like if an employee leaves before, it's like if they leave before they qualify for retirement or, or start taking it, they can take their contribution part out, back out. And, and the non-uniform pension board votes on that at every meeting. We get a report of, of those people leaving and have to approve that.
Do you have an estimate on the number of people that are participating in that now? I mean, we're making payments to them monthly, but Mr. Garrett, you might know the answer to that. I don't deal with the pension retirement.
Yeah, Tyler might.
Mr. Waningham, do you know that?
The number is in the valuation, um, I don't know if it's in Jamie's presentation. Okay, about 130.
130 right now?
Yes, sir.
And if you had to anticipate, how many might be loaded into that system over the next five years? This, this is a swag, this is a gift.
By loaded, you mean new employees?
New, new people that would go on to them.
You mean new retirees?
Yes.
I don't, I don't have that, I don't have that number in front of me right now, but we could certainly get that number.
It's not a large number. Uh, each year for audit, I have, I provide them a list of employees that are eligible for retirement, and that list is not very long.
Okay, and, uh, Ms. Mel?
Yes.
An idea about how much was paid out within the last 12 months? Did you have that number?
Uh, no, but we can.
Paid out to retirees.
Paid out to retirees.
It's about.
It was right there. Um, so the benefits distributed in 2023 was 2.6 million.
6. Thank you very much. I promise I'm done.
And Andy, I can throw one more number at you. I, I was just trying to pull from my email here. Um, the last report I can pull up on my phone was for December of 2023, and the plan had $15,181,000 in investments. So that just shows you the difference between then and now.
It's, sir, just so you know, um, when you get the presentation, all those numbers will be in there for you right now.
Right, thank you very, God bless you.
I, again, I apologize for that.
Mr. Hawkins, you sounded kind of shocked when you heard that $30 million number.
Well, by golly, it was.
But what was it the last time?
I was, I was going to say.
I think it was higher.
That number is growing, but it's not, this is not a new issue.
No, it's not, because we dealt with it.
Yeah, every.
And I kind of thought we had it under control. My fault for not following up on it.
Well, control is a loose, is a term, subject to interpretation. I mean, before 2018, the plan was going to go broke if we didn't do anything. After we made the plan changes in 2018, we're no longer projected to run out of money in the next 30 years, but we do still have the unfunded liability, which is growing.
And is the money that show, that you showed here increasing at 12%, 14%? That is over and above the million five that we're putting in now, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And that looks to be about a million dollars a year additional?
There, there's a total on there.
Oh, it is. I knew that. I was saying, if you were paying attention.
So Tyler's 100% right. We did a, I mean, we did a lot of work in 2018 with those benefit changes. I mean, again, that, the market value of assets, if you saw that graph, the assets were going to go down. I mean, we were projected to run out of money, and so we fixed that problem. Now our assets are going to go up. So the next problem is to see if we can get those assets to meet with our liability numbers. That's kind of the problem we're talking about now, close that $30 million gap.
Counsel? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Counsel, we got about eight minutes until our 6:00 PM start time.
Ms. Bechtel? You happen to be relating to somebody named Larry Bechtel.
What about the, uh?
Oh, I don't know.
Uh, I believe this. Yeah, B E I G H T O, yeah.
He's not asking. He's a cop.
All right.
Too many? I can disconnect. It'd be a lot of trouble if we had to do that. You are a lot of trouble. I'm just going to let out there.
Stay there.
You're dangerous. I just turned on one of the phones.
I took it down there.
Each council meeting with a word of prayer and pledge of allegiance. If you would like, please feel free to join us.
May I?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now call this meeting order. Mr. Garrett, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hawkins?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Mr. Cummins?
Here.
Ms. Mill?
Here.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Isby?
Here.
Should have received copies of the September tenth city council meeting minutes. Any corrections, changes, or comments?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the minutes submitted. There is no further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes seven to zero. We have our monthly financials for the month ending August thirty first, twenty twenty four. Mr. Winningham?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Counsel. I don't have a whole lot to go over with tonight, looking at August. We talked about sales tax every month, just because it's by far our largest revenue source. We were up one point nine percent in August compared to August twenty three, and year to date, we're up four point six. So upward trends there. Expenditure wise, August was our second pre-pay period month, so expenses for the month are going to look higher compared to other months of the year. So that's to be expected. Bottom line for the general fund, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand net revenue over expenses. So that's, that's good to see. And the only other thing I was going to point out to you, sanitation's having a really good year. Revenue wise, all of their line items are, are ahead of budget. So they've got a really good, well, over two million net revenue per year through August. So that one's been really good. And that's all I've got, unless anybody has something else they'd like to go over.
What's the sanitation do to increase?
The.
Recycling?
The recycling. That's a pretty volatile market, as I understand it. This year, it's just really good. The landfill fees, I believe, are doing well. Yeah, we've already collected our budget for the year on landfill fees. I don't know what the answer to that one is. I guess people just have a lot of, a lot of stuff they're getting rid of and taking out to the landfill. And then our interest income, you're seeing that across the city.
Yeah.
We're just, you know, rates are, are really good for us right now. And then our regular residential pickup, we're slightly ahead of budget there. Nothing that would really be what I would consider a trend or anything to talk about, other than just natural growth.
Counsel, any further questions for Mr. Winningham? I'll take, I'm sorry. Have a motion and a second to approve the monthly financials. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Next up, we're going to open a pub, a public hearing, is to discuss the application submission for the Great Strides and Trails for Life grant for the canopy benches at Tucker Creek Trail for the Parks Recreation Department. I'm going to ask Andrew Thames, our Parks Director, to speak to it first, and if anyone else would like to speak for it, we'll give you a few minutes to speak for it. If you would, state your name and address if you come up, and then we will open the floor to anyone who would like to speak against it. If we have nothing on either of those ends, then we'll, we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Thames?
Good evening, Counsel. So the Great, Great Strides Trail Grant, we're looking to apply for thirty-three thousand dollars. This will provide us with five canopy benches along Tucker Creek Trail. So a lot of the complaints we get, there are not enough areas for people to sit down and rest while they're exercising. We feel that this is a great use for that grant. So we're just looking to kind of take advantage of what's available.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. Thames? Would anyone else like to speak in favor? Would anyone like to speak against? At this time, we'll close the public meeting, public hearing, and we will, Counsel, we will get back to you with that, and Mr. Thames gets some information on it. Next up, we have the Community Development Committee. Mr. Hawkins? Sir, I will turn this over to you.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. With Counsel's approval, I would like to discuss moving items eight and nine up to number one in the batting order, because I think that this is wanting to be tabled for the present time. Is that, can I ask for a motion on that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to move items eight and nine B to the front. Any further discussion or questions? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you very much. Mr. French, I'm, I'm understanding that the applicant for the requested rezoning and the requested conditional use is asking maybe to do something with this, a little, it might give both sides a chance to discuss this matter further.
I, I think we'd like to postpone till maybe the first of December gives time to do some little drawings and maybe have a meeting with the neigh, the neighborhood a little bit and discuss some things and try to work out a few conditions that maybe hopefully that, you know, we can address that will be some of their concerns.
Thank you, Ms. French.
So with that request, I would move that we pull these items off of tonight's agenda and put them on, what did, first part of December? And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay.
Just to make sure if someone is here, probably is that they're okay with us both calling, and then let's, let's do it.
That's fine with me. That's fine with me. I had, Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
Well, just for your knowledge, I visited with a couple of representatives from that area on Friday afternoon at the property in question, and they, these people weren't speaking for the whole group, I don't think, but they did indicate that there were several things that they could possibly live with, if the applicant could live with it. And so then I went to the applicant and said, there's some people that are willing to visit. Would you be willing to visit with them? And the applicant said that he, he would in fact be willing to visit with them. So.
Yeah. I mean, that's great, but I'm just saying, people, if somebody's here, rather than just putting, putting it off, they need to, you know, understand what's going on and it's okay with them getting put off. Because, then a few years ago, when I first got on the city council, this is one reason why I got on there. We had people came to something like this, and the applicant wasn't there, and he just put it off. And all the people were here and didn't have anything to say about it. So I'd like to make sure it's okay with everybody before we just do it. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it.
Sure.
I mean, I just think we should hear their opinion of it.
I'm, I'm good with that. I'm absolutely good with that. Would anybody like to speak? Mr. Brooks, would you like to talk about this, please? Thank you very much. And I appreciate you coming tonight.
I'm Jeff Brooks. I'm at three twenty Castle Gate, and I'm president of the P O A of that subdivision. And I think that's a great idea, just postpone until December first, give us all a chance to meet. We all realize this has got to be developed, and we don't want to waste a bunch of time arguing in here in front of everybody. I think it's best if we just kind of convene somewhere nice and quiet and come up with some alternative.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
So if it's okay with y'all.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. And I, does anybody else that'd like to speak?
December mating for the council is December tenth. So we need a hard day to bring it back.
Okay. Is that the?
December tenth.
December tenth?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Garrett, have you noted that?
It is noted.
Very good. Then for anyone who is here, Mr. Brooks, anything else?
No.
Very good.
I appreciate you.
Thank you very much for coming. I appreciate it.
We have a motion for Mr. Hawkins to table. We have a second for this. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Items seven and eight are pulled and tabled for the night. Mr. Hawkins?
And I do appreciate, I do appreciate people's willingness to discuss this further. So thank y'all very much for coming and thank you for participating. Appreciate it. Next item, Mr. Mayor, is consideration to approve waiving all the readings for the ordinances on tonight's agenda. And we have an ordinance to be read for this. It's ordinance oh twenty-four. Oh, no. There's not an ordinance. There's not an ordinance. So do I have a motion to waive the three readings?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the waiving of three readings tonight. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to approve the amendment of ordinance oh oh six twenty-six with the Conway Tree Board. And, Mr. Tucker, you're standing there. What do you want to tell us?
Well, I'm, I would like to, we're proposing that we change the tree board from nine members to seven members. There have been rules before that somebody from the Chamber of Commerce, a business owner, different things were required. And quite frankly, we're having trouble filling those seats. And it's amending it to show three citizens at large, rather than somebody from Chamber and a business owner.
Okay, very good. Do we have a motion for this ordinance?
I'll make a motion for ordinance oh twenty-four sixty-two.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mill?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Cummins?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance to approve the amendment of the Historic District Commission. And Tucker, you're still with us. Thank you.
Similarly, we have that issue with the historic district, too. We're proposing that we remove the requirement that one be represented by Pine Street community. There is a representative downtown partnership, one resident and property owner in a locally designed or national registered historic district home, a resident or property, property owner in the Old Conway Design Overlay District, three citizens at large, and one architect or appropriate design professional.
Any questions for Ms. Tucker regarding this?
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance oh twenty-four sixty-three.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance, meaning the membership requirements for a historic commission. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mill?
Aye.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Cummins? Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
That passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is consideration to approve the nomination for a civil service commission position. Civil service advertised in August for commissioner, and the mayor has selected Harold Clem Dennen to serve one vacancy on the civil service commission. This will be a six-year term. And I move that we, that we grant this nomination, approve this nomination.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve Harold Clem Dennen for the civil service commission for a six-year term. Any further discussion?
No further discussion. Just a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How many applicants did we have that applied?
Well, we had to reopen it back because we didn't, didn't get enough. But I know Harold, he was the director of common reading. He'll be great. Yeah. No, good. No, it's a good question, Ms. Isby. Yeah. Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is an ordinance appropriating funds for program year twenty twenty-four for the Community Development Department. And Shawna, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everybody. We did finally receive our HUD funding in the amount of four hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-three dollars, and we would like to appropriate that funding so we can kick off our program year.
Any questions of Shawna?
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the appropriation of HUD funds for program year twenty twenty-four for C D B G. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Ordinance oh twenty-four sixty-four. Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mill?
Aye.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
That passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Next item, Mr. Mayor, is a resolution requesting the Faulkner County Tax Collector place a lien on various properties for expenses incurred by the city to bring those properties into compliance. And, Mr. Clausen?
Sir, good evening. You gonna take your glasses off to see me?
I did. I did. I see better up close with my, forgotten her name.
Dory Vanderbilt glasses?
No, they're not. Jessica Simpson. Thank you. Jessica Simpson. See, I can't see you as good.
You can get your money back if you can't close.
Harry Carey.
I like it. Before you start, do you remember, talking to Harry Carey, do you remember when he had his heart attack? He said his wife hadn't been at home, it would have been more fatal. I'm sorry.
Harry was a.
Mr. Clausen?
Oh, we've got a couple of these, Mr. Mayor. The first one is at seventeen oh three Bryant Circle. Is there a, an owner or representative of an owner from seventeen oh three Bryant Circle with us this evening? I don't see anyone getting up, so we have a resolution to be read for this item. It's resolution R twenty-four.
Forty-six.
Forty-six or seven? I heard six here, seven there.
Forty-six.
Forty-six. We use forty-six at this time.
All right.
And at Bryant Circle, we've, we've spent two hundred thirteen dollars and thirty And at Bryant Circle, we've spent $213.34 to clean this particular piece of property up. Pictures are included.
I think those pictures were very helpful too. I know you can't do it every time, but it's, obviously it made a difference. You can see where the expenditure was.
We started adding those just a couple of months ago and it's kind of the, you know, I think it really helps to be able to see the kind of before and after.
It does.
Absolutely.
Counsel, do we have a motion on this? Or do you already have that, Mr. Hawkins? I'm sorry.
Did you make a motion, Andy, or you were just mentioning the?
Do we have a motion, Mr. Garrett? I'll make a motion that we take care of this property.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution placing a lien on property at 1703 Bryant Circle in the amount of $213.34. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Passes seven to zero. Mr. Hawkins?
Second location, Mr. Mayor, is at 1421 Lincoln Street. On this one, we spent $737.11. And Spencer, what do we do here?
Well, this.
Quite a bit more money.
Yes, sir. If you look through the documents that are enclosed, most of that is lumber. This is a property that was called into us. Neighborhood was concerned. The property had the windows busted out, had been overgrown. There's concern about children getting in play and it was kind of a public health and safety issue. We gave the citizens there ample time to take care of it. When they weren't able to, city stepped in. And a lot of this cost is lumber at Lowe's. It's the price of the appropriate plywood to board up those windows and the time involved to do so. And to this day, it is secured and looks, you know, it's boarded up, but it's a lot safer.
Very good.
Thank you.
Make a motion that we adopt this resolution at 1421 Lincoln Street.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution placing a lien on the property at 1421 Lincoln Street in the amount of $737.11. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
That's a seven to zero. Thank you, Spencer. Y'all did a great job.
Oh, thank you.
Nick? I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hawkins.
No, no problem. Final item, because we've moved eight and nine out at this point in time, is an ordinance to approve the amendment of the Building and Fire Codes Ordinance for the Permits and Inspection. And, heavens, I don't know who to call for this. Come on in.
Hey, Cecil.
I'm counsel, mayor. This is a request to update our ordinances on our building fire code, the county collection of plumbing. These change regularly and as you can see by the numbers. That is our existing year of our codes that are up to date at this point. And that were important. We're just wanting to get this clarified.
You just wanted to move it up to current dates? Okay, thank you, Cecil.
Thanks, Cecil. Any questions on this, counsel? This is just bringing us up to standard.
Make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance 02465.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yeah.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
That passes seven to zero. Thank you, Cecil. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Remove those two items. Next item is our Public Service Committee. We have a resolution to approve the grant application submission for the Great Strides and Trails for Life Grant for Tucker Creek Canopy Benches Project for the Parks Recreation Department, Mr. Thames. Seems like you were just here with this.
I was. Good to see you guys again.
Counsel, do y'all have any questions for Mr. Thames? This is just a.
What were the costs? Thirty-three thousand, and it's a no-match grant.
I'm sorry, you said it's a no-cost grant, no cost to the city?
Right, yes.
Thirty-three thousand, right. Okay, thank you, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Do we need an emergency clause in this? Is this something that has to be applied for sooner than later or? Well, it's a resolution. Well, it's a resolution.
September 30th is the application deadline.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, I'll make a motion for the adoption of the resolution R2448.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this resolution. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Passes seven to zero. Next on the agenda, we have Public Safety, thank you, Andrew. We have Public Safety Committee and Counsel, as you know, the city is, I'm sorry, this is IT. It's an ordinance to approve the appropriation of insurance funds and vehicle inventory removal for the Department of Information and Technology. Hello, Kevin?
Hello, counsel. There is one thing I wanted to bring to your attention. I think there was a typo. The insurance company provided the city $24,100, but under appropriation, it says $21,400. Those numbers were transposed. So I don't know if there's a way to correct that on the fly, but if you can, it's supposed to be appropriating $24,100 back to the IT budget.
Someone could just make a motion to amend.
With that change, yeah. I'll make a motion to amend to that change.
We have a motion and a second to approve section one from $21,400 to $24,100. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett? It's only amendment.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
That's a seven to zero.
I'll make a motion for the adoption of the ordinance 02466 along with the emergency clause.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance along with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
The mercy clause, Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
And Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Those both pass seven to zero. Thank you, Kevin.
Next up is an ordinance to approve the reclassification and addition of personnel for the Conway Emergency Operations Center. Mr. Candy will be handling this. Of course, counsel, you're very well aware that city will be taking over 911 dispatch for the entire county on January 1st. And we've asked Sean to rearrange and get that in order. And so he is here tonight to discuss that with you.
Good evening, counsel. So yes, this is quite a rearrangement, but we'll be bringing on 11 county dispatchers that are currently working for the county and bringing them over, basically just absorbing them. So we have to have the positions created in order to do that. And during that time, we have also added a new training section or new position for training as well as a training and QA manager, which is our quality assurance manager. And training will be over the training coordinator and then operations manager of the new positions. And we are only requesting the $120,833.53 for the remainder of 24.
Make a motion to approve the ordinance.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance. Any further discussion? Big job you guys have got out there.
We're rolling now.
I know you are. And they do a great job, great job.
They do, based on the timing.
I'll add that to the second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this ordinance with the emergency clause. Any further discussion? Mr. Garrett? Yes, sir, yes, sir.
So the, any shortfalls outside of the 911 fees that we'll receive from the state, any shortfalls will be split 52% city, 48% county based on population.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Garrett, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, just a quick follow-up. So the 911 fees that the county was collecting will come to us.
Correct. We'll be receiving the entirety of the Faulkner County.
Two million dollars or thereabouts.
It's just right around there, yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that can fluctuate based on users.
Exactly.
Stuff on users.
Is this pay sufficient to have people there?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
We've been working closely with the county to make sure there's no gap in insurance coverage as well for these transitions because they didn't ask for it. So we're trying to make it a soft landing for them and county's been working with us very well and we're gonna do what we can on our part.
But it's, they do a tremendous job and it's a tremendously hard job. We appreciate the job they do. Yeah. It's a PSAP rearrangement statewide. Mr. Garrett?
Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Cummins? Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
The mercy clause, Ms. Mel?
Aye.
Mr. Ledbetter?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Aye.
Ms. Isby?
Yes.
Mr. Cummins?
Yes.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Those both pass seven to zero. Thank you, Sean.
What was that ordinance number? I didn't get that.
Sixty-six, I think?
Sixty-seven.
Seven, I'm sorry.
Terry, would you like to come up?
Thank you, counsel.
Counsel, before Terry comes up, I had a chance to go out and see what's the NICA event here not too long ago. The Conway Bearcats do a tremendous job there. Terry and his crew's done a tremendous job. I told Terry, when my wife and I topped the hill, it looked like Woodstock. Not that I'm old enough to be at Woodstock. I'm just saying that from the pictures I've seen.
But you are.
No. But it did, there were tents and kids everywhere. It was just tremendous. And the group that's coming back here for this will be even larger. And there was over 800 at that one.
Yeah.
This was, anyway, Terry.
So Terry Cottington, city biking pedestrian coordinator. And yeah, as the mayor stated, I wanted to cordially invite you all out there this weekend. We're expecting over 850 athletes this time racing from all over the state, 42 states. It is middle school and high school mountain biking at the Conway Meadows Tech Park. So it's a three-mile trail system that the city, we've worked in partnership with Conway Development Group. You know, I've done a lot of trail work out there, but there's been a lot of volunteers from the community. And I'm kind of sporting the Conway Bearcat jersey in case you've never seen it before. But yeah, the races are Sunday. Saturday is a pre-ride setup day. The races are Sunday, starting at 8:30 in the morning. I'd love to see y'all out there. And we've got volunteer spots for anyone in the community that wants to volunteer. Come check it out and hopefully folks fall in love with it. This is the second event to happen in Conway, which is kind of unprecedented for the Arkansas NICA League to have two events in one city. And that's a testament to the commitment of you all, the city council and the community and all the people that have helped create this wonderful venue out there. So wanted to just share that opportunity with you and happy to answer any questions.
And counsel, I want y'all to know I stood in the gap when the people from northwest Arkansas were flashing money at Terry, trying to get him up there. I had to ask them to leave. I told them they couldn't have him.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Really, this is a great event.
What time on Saturday?
30 and last race.
Can you volunteer like five minutes?
Yeah, it's usually, it's usually a few hours.
Make sure it's appropriate.
And one of the, one of the cool things that I'll say about the Arkansas NICA League is there's no tryouts. So whenever these athletes are competing, there's no tryouts. Nobody sits on the bench. So everybody's racing and having a good time. It is going to be unlike any other sporting event that you've seen as far as watching kids from different teams interact with one another. And also, what other sport could you come out and volunteer and be like involved out on the playing field? So that's, that's one of the cool things is we need horse marshals out there and directly interacting with the kids while they're racing.
Thank you, Terry. Counsel, before we adjourn, I'd like to ask us to go into executive session. For those of y'all watching at home, we had a council person who stepped away. They had a great opportunity to move into their parents' old home and that's exactly what they did. But they knew they were living outside their ward, so they stepped aside. So we have an opening. Counsel, you have five applicants. There's nothing written in stone that says the decision has to be made tonight, but I There's nothing written in stone that says the decision has to be made tonight, but I would like to take a motion that we retire into executive session.
Second?
Have a motion and a second that we go into executive session. When we get back, if any action is taken, we will announce that. Okay, the council met to discuss the opening on the city council position in Mr. Ledbetter's ward, and they have made a decision. Council, at this time, I will take a motion.
Need nominations first?
Yes, sir, nomination.
I'd like to nominate Spencer Hawkes.
Okay, we have a nomination for Spencer Hawkes. At this point, Mr. Thinking about it, we vote?
Is anybody second?
We need a second.
Second, we need other nominations, I would think.
As I'm saying, are you making a motion to nominate Spencer Hawkes?
Yes, yes, I am making a motion to nominate.
We need a second.
Order for the motion to be considered by the council.
Someone like, someone like the second. We have a motion and a second to place Mr. Spencer Hawkes in this position on the city council.
Other nominations, I would think, would be appropriate at this point.
I don't know. So because?
No.
Yeah, the motion's been made.
You can just take one motion at a time, and if this one doesn't pass, then we, y'all would move to the next.
All in favor of Spencer Hawkes, please raise your hand. Count four votes. So what's our next move?
I believe they just appointed a new councilman.
They did, because that's, there's seven votes. So Mr. Spencer Hawkes will fulfill the rest of Cindy's term, which will be two years and roughly three months. With that, Council, I'll take a motion to adjourn. I'm sorry.
Can I make one quick announcement?
Yes, ma'am.
Just really quick. Dr. Cummins and I are hosting our Ward Two meeting on Monday night, this coming Monday, here in the city council chambers at five-thirty.
Dr. Cummins, I'm having a headache. I have a second on adjournment.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.